Dear every father, thank you so much for the beautiful weather that you've given us. Please be with our community as we're starting our busy time and gathering the crops. Please be with their safety, please be with their worker's safety, please be with our county patrons as they go to and fro with the extra traffic and stuff. Please be with each young man as they make decisions for our county. And as always, we want to just thank you for the many blessings that we forget to thank you for every single day. We've come to you with all these things in your son's name, Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to go on past that.
Yeah. Make motion to skip number six and move on to number seven where I'm written on Gary.
Okay.
Say him. M and O warrants.
Sarah, can you send me to Gary's office, please? To Gary's office? Is he not in there? Is he in there? Well, he's supposed to be in the meeting also, and that's what we're trying to find. Am I... Thank you. All right, Jeff, I called his cell phone also, and so, alrighty. But he gave me nothing, so, yeah. Thank you, man. Alright, bye. I have not looked at the, um... Statement they just sent it Friday. And so, yeah, I have not had a chance to look at it. I got it printed out, but I will get it looked at this afternoon. It was still not straightened out because they had to reimburse the amount that they took out wrong again. So, yeah. I want to brag on you guys, and that's the officers. The auditors told Woodward County to call out Alpha County and to copy us on our officer meetings. Then I went, "Do you mind if you talk to me?" So I took that as a very, very high compliment. So, thank you, guys. And I'll make that announcement in next week's meeting also. That county clerk called, and she was like, "Oh, we're gonna get rid of them." And they told us, "Oh, you guys," my act went. So I sent her six months' worth of agendas and...
Ten, one hundred.
Nine months.
I'll make a motion for the M and O warrants. I have a little second. I think it hurts sort of.
We have, like, it's from, um, EMS, Sheriff, and District One. If I can find my file.
I'll call Danny in a little bit.
I probably still think it's already ten.
Yeah, that's true. Monthly officer.
We have monthly officers from County Clerk, Treasurer, Sheriff, and Assistant.
Make a motion for the monthly officer reports. Alcohol, beverage tax.
Second.
I'll make a motion for the alcohol. Beverage tax, everybody on time. Labor, appropriations.
Everybody just... Brian Little finally signed the contracts. Kerry needs called me the other day and asked why. I said, "I apologize." I said, "I tried to do it all at once and send you the contracts and your PO and all that stuff at one time." I said, "And I'm still waiting on the ADA." So she said, "That was fine." She just needed a, um, copy of something for, um, to make it relevant when all that stuff started. So I apologize to her, but he brought those down finally this morning, so, um, that goes mailed out, and she should be on her way. Still have not heard anything from B and B. I've called them every single Monday for the past however many Mondays since that started. They asked in the fairgrounds meeting how long we had to allow that as well. That's up to you guys. You didn't put a date in your specs, so, um, do you want to take the next bidder? Which was another forty thousand higher. So, anyway, I don't know what we can do to speed them up. She's not even answering my calls now. Their, um, and their voicemail is full, so I tried several times last week, and I usually always try on Mondays. And if I get through to her, then I just make a note of what she said and go from there. They ask that, and they're... They had a meeting last week, and then that training last week. And I suppose if you guys didn't put anything in the specs, that's up to you guys.
Make a motion for appropriations. Congratulations for temporary appropriations, County General Cash and Highway Sales Tax Accounts.
This is just those balances for July 1. The statutes tell us that we take fifty percent of the previous year's estimate needs, so that's what we have on here. And then on the cash accounts, I just emailed everybody and asked them what amount they wanted to carry over, so that is what those are. So then we have a balance out there for July 1, nineteen fifty p.m. zone. You probably already have a bit of them. One of them is the County General, and the other one is the cash accounts.
I'll make a motion for appropriations. Labor. Alpha County EMS requests Alpha County County Commissioner to remove Brian Switfeger as ward member in place of Happy Smith.
I could not think of Happy's name, but I've removed his, so I just pencil it in. I could not think of his actual birth name. I'm like, "Oh, my goodness." Roger texted me that I'd already posted the agenda. I go, "Okay, he's happy on, are they?"
Make a motion for a request. Transfers for security in the low to house security services, three thousand sixty.
I thought Gary would be up here to explain this also, but he's not. He's wanting to take one month's salary out of the M and O for courthouse security and put it into personal services and pay Dan's, um, one month's salary out of that due to him working the, um, for the, every Wednesday for the courthouse, so... That's what that's for.
How many hours a day does he do that?
Well, it's on every Wednesday, and, I mean, it just depends.
I just wonder if it averages up to a total.
He told me it did, again. Is it my responsibility to add that up? I don't know what he works. I mean, sometimes he's down there for an hour, sometimes he's down there for two or three hours on Wednesdays. I kind of questioned the same thing, and he said, "Well, I can just take that amount out each month." I'm like, "Oh, that's fine. You'll get two paychecks then, 'cause I can't help me with that," whatever. So he said, "Well, it averages out to the whole year."
Motion for a second. Walk through agreement for monthly departmental health included wildlife services for Alpha County.
Open that invoice. I attached a copy of the invoice there, so you guys can just see here. Opened it on the verge.
This is where the bill comes in.
Yep, yep. Very nice, young man.
Control the improvement on the job, twenty seventy-five.
There are two copies here. That way you guys can have an original, and I can have an approved general. There's two places to sign on over. There's two.
Two, two places on...
There's two places to sign on each one of them.
I'll make a motion for the monthly encouragement update. I'll say it. Oh, favor. It's two places. I guess there's actually four.
Yeah, there's four places.
I gotta add the original back, so she can got you. Sorry, I got busy with medical stuff. Donation certificate agreement between Joe Wilson and Craig Rags.
There's two places on each one of them.
Down here, I'm guessing?
Yeah, with the three lines on it. That's what I am assuming also. I mean, there's not any directions on it, so that is what I am assuming.
There's two places on each one?
Yep. I left your data alone, because this is dated May twenty-first, so...
I think I might try to start getting the signatures. I'll make a motion for donations or certificates. Make a motion to move back to our seat. I think so. Very nice discussion from courthouse server.
So, the server that we have right now currently for the security cameras is only Fritz. The quote we got was twenty thousand dollars for another one. Actually, it was almost twenty-three thousand. I wasn't just gonna jump in and buy one because I don't feel like it's just on me. I think that ought to be a group discussion on what we spend on a server for the cameras. I think the one that we have right now currently will hold three months of footage. I don't think we need one that big. I mean, if something happens, we normally know within a week or two to be able to go back and pull it off or and get the video footage on it. But I wanted, I wanted everybody's input on it besides me just, just running with it and doing something.
Depends on how long we need to keep it. Yes, I guess there's some type of lawsuit that comes out of it, or two months down the road.
Well, as long as we can get it off there in time, well, then we could keep the disk forever. But it would be... That's just, all it is is storage. I mean, that's, but that's what we're paying for is that storage. I'm shopping around, um, trying to find some cheaper options, but I, like I said, I just didn't want to just jump in and purchase one. But I felt like you all should know that the server's down and the cameras aren't working, and that's where we're at right now. Does anybody have any thoughts on how long we think we ought to keep storage?
How long are you right now?
I think three months.
Well, not like, we had it for a week, and then, you know, we had several tort claims come in, and that week had already passed by, so I definitely don't consider it longer than a week.
I think minimum of a month. Yeah, yeah.
A month? You want to do a month?
Hold on, not a minute. I mean, I'd say a minimum, like Nate said, I mean, you never know.
No, you don't never know.
You don't know when they're gonna file those tort claims.
I like the, I like the three months. It's just, that's what we're paying for is that storage on there. I mean, and with all the cameras we have in the courthouse, anytime they, they detect any motion, they start, they start saving video. And I don't know, it's just...
All these lawsuits that are going on now with jails and everything else, and that's all going through, that's all going to federal court, and there's no, there's no capital law in federal court.
Well, like I said, I just...
Guys getting thirty million dollar lawsuits.
I didn't want it to be just on me. I, I thought it should be a group discussion of, I mean, that's a lot of money for a server. We've had this one, its lifespan's supposed to be five years, we've had this one eight. So, the people, Digi said that they could come get ours, leave us a loner, and try to fix the one that we have, but there's no guarantees that they can fix it.
What's wrong with, I mean...
That keeps shutting off. Every time they reboot it, the cameras will come back up, and then after an hour or two or whatever, it shuts itself off. There's, it's showing some kind of a, an error on it.
Did they give you an idea of what it costs for them to go through to try and fix it?
They have not given us that idea. Their idea is, "We're gonna come get yours, leave you a loner, and then you're gonna buy the loner." That's the way I took it. So, but like I said, that's...
So basically ours can't be fixed from...
That's, that's what they're saying.
But they want us to buy the loner, then basically it can't be fixed.
Yes. But, like I said, that's twenty-three thousand dollars almost. I, that's a lot of money for, for just, like I said, I just thought that it should be a group discussion on other people and not just me. There is the money in the courthouse security to be able to pull it out of and buy one, but I didn't know if we wanted to go with one that didn't hold as much footage or for as long to try to save some money on it, or if we wanted to just go back with what we had. Money's tight. I just, uh, that was my thought. I just wasn't...
They say how much it would come down on the lower amount of storage in quotes?
I'm wanting to say one of them was fifteen, but I don't remember how long that one saved it. I would have to, I'd have to call him back and ask him, because it doesn't say on the quote how long it saves the video footage. So one that he sent me was fifteen, the other one was twenty-three.
Video footage off one lawsuit could span more than...
Sure.
Is there anything statute-wise, like how long we have to store it, I mean, or anything?
That I know of, but like I said, I know, I know it saved us from several tort claims.
I don't mind spending a little extra money, just, the legislation just matched this year. All tort claims are doubled.
Yeah.
Twenty-three thousand's cheaper than a million.
I don't remember the balance in your courthouse security, do you remember?
I was, I'm wanting to say it was almost twenty-eight.
But did you take into consideration the three thousand you just pulled out of it?
Yeah, yeah.
I could, I'm sorry.
I'd probably just stick with what I have and...
And go with it?
You got one's years of...
We did. It's eight, it's eight years old. I didn't realize it was that old. But I'm, I'm old school. I'm, I think that it ought to work forever. I mean, you spend that much money for something, I just think it ought to work forever. But like I said, that's a lot of money. I didn't, I, I wasn't just, I got some backlash on that, "Oh, no, we need it right now." It's, no, I'm not, I'm not doing anything until we have discussion on it. That's a lot of money.
So, I mean, it's not recording anything?
Not right now.
Right now, it's not doing...
We don't even have any cameras up right now, because the cameras won't even stay on, because it goes...
The whole building or just the...
The whole building.
Probably get it fixed.
Yeah. So you guys want to go with the, the same, same one that we had? Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, a new one of what we had. Don't fix the, yeah, don't fix the old one.
There's no, I mean, there's no, just by what you're saying, there's no chance of fixing it if they want us to buy the loner.
That's kind of the way I was taking it. We're going to come get yours and look through it and then leave you a loner, but.
If you buy a new one, you, you got the old one in hand, could you maybe find somebody to look at it?
I think that if we buy a new one, maybe we can just give them our old one and see if they can't fix it too. That way we have a backup. And that wouldn't be a bad idea.
I would recommend you get your quotes and attach your quotes to that also because, you know, they're in that gray area on technology stuff, whether it's the twenty-five thousand or not the twenty-five thousand. But I would do your due diligence. I mean, you've already done the work, so attach those other quotes and stuff to that to see so we can show that, yeah, you went out there and stopped us. You already done that work.
Right. Okay. Well, like I said, that's all I wanted. I just wanted to bring to your attention and, and get some input from you all.
Is there any grants right now with security or?
There is.
Do you have a nine-one-one?
They're not open. Now, the one is, it's an equipment brand. It opens sometime this month, but it still won't fall over until next year.
We haven't had time to see it waiting.
Yeah, it's.
We're trying to get it going as fast as possible.
Well, that's.
Especially if it's not working in the jail.
Well, I'm not even worried so much in the jail just because we have those people in there that are going back there and checking in as somebody following when they come at the door, like that blonde lady that fell. And I mean, she, she fell hard. I can't imagine how it felt because the video looked like it hurt.
What's her turnaround time of getting us in there?
They could probably be out here either tomorrow or the next day.
If you got your quotes ready to be able to back it up.
Got, I mean, it's less than twenty-five thousand.
Technology is, yeah, yeah. Because that technology on inventory is like fifteen hun, it was like five hundred. So you want to just make sure that all of our bases are covered on that. I mean, I would almost even bring your written quotes up next week. Just that way we can sign those.
You have any quotes from anybody else or just?
Just the one, one company that we've been going through because nobody wants to drive all the way up here. That's, that's another issue is getting people to drive to charity and service it when something does go wrong. And then as soon as they do, it's, they're driving. They charge us for their drive time, which is a crazy amount of money.
Which is a company out of?
Oaklawn City. But when I, when I've started talking around to other counties, almost everybody else is using the same company too.
But you're.
That we're using, yeah. Because I thought, well, if there's somebody cheaper, we might as well use them. But I want to, I want to check with some guys that has done some work on our camera systems and see if, if we just get the server then and have them send it to us if they'll put it in for us.
What about that guy that did all the C D stuff? What's his name? See if he can come base stuff in the county warrant form. Maybe he's haven't had time to get him out there, but. He's Woodward. I mean, he does, did he do all the C D stuff? That dude guy that come there and updated all their stuff?
I don't know. I got a call donation just a moment ago.
I might check.
Well, if you find out, call me. Let me know. Because I've.
I don't, I don't know how, I mean, guessing he could do it all. I don't, I don't know.
Well, we was using that one I T guy from, from Alba.
And that's why C D switched to this guy.
Because he, he quit and went to a police academy.
Oh, man, I'll have to check with.
Yeah.
Another option that he was.
Yeah, I, no, I like options.
He'd be a little bit closer than Oaklawn City.
Yeah, he would be. So. And my, another thought, I mean, you're, you're spending that much money for a server. They, you would think they'd be happy to just run down there and put it in for you. I mean. But that's all, that's all I needed. I'll roll with that and get some more quotes and, or get as many as I can.
See if I can get you a couple names.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Good luck there.
Have a good day.
You too, sir.
Item from District Two, taken item on online auction on Purple Wave, started May first and closed on May twenty-second, or twenty-seventh. Tractor, two bowers and a GoPro getter. Favor. Resolution to dispose equipment, I guess we'll do twenty through twenty-two. Two hours on a GoPro getter.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution for disposal.
Twenty-three and twenty-four, resolution to dispose equipment for better kinds, skid steer.
Make a motion to approve the resolution of disposing.
Let's leave an update. So looks like yours adjourned. House Bill one hundred and sixty-seven, which was the bill that raised the, the cost that newspapers can charge. The governor vetoed that with the Senate or the legislature overruled his veto. So that, I don't know if that was an emergency bill or not. So they're either going to effect July if it was or it'll be November when that goes into effect. House Bill twenty-seven fifty-eight, that's our transportation funding bill, creating that PAC fund, seventy-five million dollars. Twenty-seven fifty-eight. That is, that passed through the House and Senate and is sitting on the governor's desk right now. So everything's in the governor's hands now because since legislature's already adjourned, they don't, they can't, they can't override it. A veto, if you vetoed it. And he has from, I think it, let's see it, I think it ended up on his desk on Thursday. And so he has fifteen days to sign it or basically it'll be, if he doesn't sign it, it'll be a pocketful veto and it'll be gone. So everything's against him now. So if you want to get on the, send the governor's office an email. I did that this morning. And see if I can get him to sign it because it's, everything's in his hands because they can't override. The votes were there to override it. If it had been on his desk a week earlier, he would have had five days. And if he would vetoed it, then the legislature could have overrode his veto. But it's, now it's all in his hands. So. House Bill, or sixteen sixty-four, the open meetings law, that basically passed, it went to his desk. Governor didn't sign it, so he had five days and, and so it becomes law. And then I mentioned, I don't have the bill number in front of me earlier. The caps on the tort claims have, that legislation passed and it basically doubles tort claims, the cap on them.
So fifty thousand or?
Uh, but it was seventy-five. It's a hundred or fifty now and.
Yeah, a hundred fifty.
And it's based off population. If you're over, I can't remember what the population is, but we, we would be a hundred and fifty thousand. Higher populations will be two hundred. Let's see. That's pretty much, we've covered everything. It was a good year for the most part. If we can get this twenty-seven fifty-eight across the line, it'd be a really good year for county bills. Most everything that we wanted or didn't want, it all turned out pretty well for us. But that's all I got on those.
Unforeseen business with me here.
I got one thing on unforeseen. I don't know if Randy sent this to you guys or not at the end of last week. I only end up with one copy of it. I had two.
Another funding.
Oh.
Yeah.
Did he send that to everybody?
Oh, okay.
Or I got it anyways.
All right, well, all right. Well, if you got it.
So. You're talking about the serve and all or?
Yeah, the, the caps on the motor vehicles, they took the caps off it after this year, but they're back into effect next year. And so we're good on that. We got hit last year with both the caps hitting. We are going to get the cap on the serve. We're only going to get about a third of the money in our June appropriations and we'll get no serve.
June or July or?
June.
Yeah, because we'll get nothing.
And then July we'll get nothing. So basically that'll hit our accounts in July and August is where we'll get hit with those. So. That's all I had of a new business. I didn't know if you guys got this or not because I was the one that asked him the question and he sent it to me. So I didn't know if he sent it to everybody who, and used Alpha County as an example. So I didn't know who got it. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.